Twenty fourteen, we are in the boardroom of the Fisher Building, one-two-one-two-one, West North Avenue. We will begin with a moment of silent reflection, please. Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mr. Bodden.
Here.
Mrs. Casey.
Here.
Mrs. Fee.
Yes.
Mr. Croner.
Here.
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Mrs. Milfeld.
Here.
Mrs. Randall. Here. Our first item is public comment on non-agenda items. Members of the Wauwautosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with a member or members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Is there anyone present who would like to comment on non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we will proceed to approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which Board members would like to remove for separate discussion and action? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, is there a discussion by the Board on the consent agenda?
Mr. Croner.
I just have one comment. I noticed on the resignation list, Elena Meyer is leaving the district, and I just wanted to say that for both of my children, her course was transformative in high school, that the critical thinking that she taught and the things that they learned in her classes really changed the outcome for them in high school. So, while I'm sorry to see her leave the district, I've learned that she's going to graduate school, so that's a good thing, so I wish her the best.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Any public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Mrs. Galante.
Mr. Bodden.
Yes.
Mrs. Casey.
Yes.
Mrs. Fee.
Yes.
Mr. Croner.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
I'm staying.
Mrs. Milfeld.
Yes.
Mrs. Randall.
Yes. Okay, our first action item tonight from the Teaching and Learning Department, Mrs. Milfeld, please.
Yes, thank you. It is recommended that the School Board approve revisions to Policy five-four-six-zero, graduation requirements, and I so move.
Okay.
Second.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Meyer and Mrs. Milfeld. Dr. Erdl, you wanted to comment?
Yeah, if I can, the comment on the change from the last meeting when it was presented under Honors, excuse me, under Honors Diploma, point two, completion of Honors Challenge Seminar or One Advanced Placement Course, and what was added for which the student has earned no lower than a B three-point-oh grade, both first and second semesters.
Thank you for the clarification. Board members, discussion? Mrs. Milfeld?
Thank you. I had actually contacted Administration to ask them a little bit more information. I feel very strongly about the Honors Challenge Course. I think it is a unique course that we offer throughout the district. I understand the overarching reason for adding an OR AP course and also adding the grade point requirement. However, I would like to request that we review this next year to be sure that we don't lose that Honors Course and students enrolling in that Honors Course, and also looking at the AP side of it and the grade point average. Again, I think Wauwautosa is unique in offering some of these higher-level courses, and they're very attractive to colleges, and really, most importantly, the students that take these courses, even though they are difficult at times, they really do appreciate them and they prepare them for college.
Thank you. Mrs. Casey?
Oh, I would agree with Mrs. Milfeld on most of those points. Some, I have a little different concern, but certainly feel comfortable moving forward with this and welcome looking at this again next year.
Yeah, I agree. I made note, Mrs. Milfeld, that we would be reviewing this again. I would just ask to clarify, even though you talked about it, Dr. Erdl, the three-point-oh grade on both the first and second semesters is for both the Challenge and the Advanced Placement?
Correct.
Courses? Okay. All right.
I'll just add one comment, and that is that we will...
I'll just add one comment. The other thing that we're going to do is this year is look at the AP Integrated Course. That's a two-year course. That is one of the things that the teachers had previously talked about, because there is no, I mean, it's a, the Challenge Seminar is a popular course. I'd like to think that that course can stand on its own merit, because it does provide thinking and challenges and that integrated approach that I don't know that we get in all aspects of our curriculum, but it doesn't have an external piece to it that we would find with the AP. So, as we're talking about it, it is something that that conversation's already been opened to look at, the Advanced Placement Course, kind of, it's, I wouldn't say it's the equivalent, but it's a very similar course, but it's an AP level course.
Okay, thank you. And I, the other thing I would add is, and I think Mr. Meyer alluded to this, the overall idea of an Honors Diploma, and is that district-wide, and are the requirements the same for the two high schools? So, that can all be part of the same discussion, correct? Okay. Anyone else? Is there any community comment on this item? Seeing none, Mrs. Galante.
Mr. Bodden.
Yes.
Mrs. Casey.
Yes.
Mrs. Fee.
Yes.
Mr. Croner.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld.
Yes.
Mrs. Randall.
Yes. Okay. Next, we have the superintendent's report, excuse me, I'm sorry, action item. Mr. Meyer, please.
It is recommended that the School Board approve the addition of grades seven and eight for the Montessori School, beginning with the two thousand fifteen-sixteen school year, as presented at the July fourteen-two thousand fourteen meeting, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Erdl, did you want to speak before?
Yeah, there's, I think Mr. Anderson provided some further clarifying information, and I, just a couple of thoughts about undertaking this program, and I think it's, I know I talked a lot at the last meeting about it, but there's a lot of excitement around adding seventh and eighth grade to our school here, and there's some risk associated with it, and I think it's important that we, I'm not going to hide the fact that we want to attract our resident, non-attending students to come into our district. We've been very open about doing that and trying to attract those parents and those families into our schools, and in this case, Mr. Anderson is going to be knocking on doors, inviting them into open houses for seventh and eighth grade for Montessori, but we do want to bring in more students. We want to make sure that we have enough students to financially, in particular in the first two years, to get it underway and get it rolling, because there are some additional costs. A shifting of staffing from our middle schools to Montessori, so there's some breakeven as far as overall core staffing. So, we're going to keep moving forward, but we do want to make sure we have at least twenty students in the first year, and we're nearing fifty in the second year, so we have some recruiting efforts to move forward with.
Okay, thank you. Now, Mr. Anderson, did you have anything to add?
No, Phil, well said.
Okay. Board members, questions, comments?
Iowa.
Mr. Bodden.
I have a question about how the lottery system works. Again, Mr. Anderson, can you explain that? Is it per grade? Is it every year that?
Sure. So, the lottery window this coming year will be in February. February first through the twenty-first will be registration period. At that point, we look at our enrollment, how many seats we have available for the following year, and how many siblings are coming in, and so we determine how many seats at each grade level we have available. So, at this point, we know we can determine that we'd look at a maximum of twenty-five for that first year, and some of the things that we can look for in this coming year's lottery is, given that if we expand to a seven and eight next year, the sixth grade, which we have currently, if we look at going into next year, we'd have available, normally our families don't apply for sixth-grade seats, because we normally don't open them, because you don't want to apply to the school for one year. So, we hope to attract some more families for this sixth-grade opening, because we'll have some seats available. So, we open those seats, and again, there are, the district personnel applies for them.
It is by grade level.
By grade level.
So individually by...
Do we turn away more parents the younger the grades as opposed to middle grades?
Yes. Yeah, because traditionally, parents tend not to want to enter the lottery at fourth grade, when your students are going fourth, maybe just four, five, six, so. So, yes, we see a traditional enrollment of more people in the lottery for the younger grades.
I would anticipate this could and will attract more, because there is a longer stretch. So, for example, you're in fourth grade, and if you can only go two years, whereas now they would see that there's a more extended period of time, and I wouldn't be surprised if we get some applications at sixth grade of people looking for something different than the traditional middle school. So, we'll, time will tell, but I think we're going to see some of those types of applications.
Do you see most of the Montessori students going on into the middle school model?
Of current students, yes. Majority of our parents have said that they would continue with the Montessori into seventh and eighth grade.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Croner.
So, a couple of questions. One comment is just concern, not a concern, just what is in the motion that was, what is presented at the July fourteenth meeting, but there were some financial uncertainties then, which I think must have been solved, because we have a new budget. So, does this motion include the budget that we received with this board packet, or does that budget come forward as separate items?
The budget would be the information that was sent forward from Mr. Anderson for this meeting, is what we're going to be operating off of? Is that, that's our scenario that we're working off of?
Okay. That's the only question I have.
Anyone else? I had a question, and I can't remember. Okay. All right, is there a community comment, please, on this action item? No? Okay. Seeing none, Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mr. Bodden.
Yes.
Mrs. Casey.
Yes.
Mrs. Fee.
Yes.
Mr. Croner.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld.
Yes.
Mrs. Randall.
Yes. Okay. We move to then reports from the Board. We have Mrs. Kwiatkowski from the Teaching and Learning Department regarding some policy revisions and a new policy.
Thank you. I believe you all received copies of the policy revisions and the new policy in your packet, so I thought I'd just go through and give a brief explanation of each revision and give you the reason why we're doing it. The first one I wanted to talk about was the Public School Open Enrollment Policy, Policy number five-one-one-three, and right now, state law, recently state law has changed that you can actually revoke a student's open enrollment based on habitual truancy, and you can consider tardiness, or you can consider someone who's tardy a habitual truant. So, based on recommendations from the Department of Public Instruction, we explicitly stated the definition of tardiness in our policy, and that was included in the revisions for our Public School Open Enrollment. Then, because we're changing the Public School Open Enrollment and explicitly describing what tardy is and defining it, I also thought it was beneficial to add it to our attendance, because we speak to tardy in our attendance policy. So, those are the revisions for Policies five-one-one-three and fifty-two-hundred attendance. I'm bringing back the smoking and use of tobacco by students, because I have learned that apparently some of the e-cigarettes, you can actually smoke things that aren't tobacco-related, and in our policy, we talked about tobacco, so I thought it was beneficial to explicitly talk about the other non-tobacco-related products that students are, people are currently using, and it's the flavored smokeable vapors and products. So, I've added that language to the policy. Policy two-four-six-zero, just renaming that policy, was referred to as the Exceptional Education Needs, changing the name of that policy to Special Education Services for Students with Disabilities to align with what we're trying to accomplish in our school district in regard to person-friendly language. And then, I've added, or I'm sorry, the Drug Prevention Policy, five-five-three-zero. Going through that policy, looking there, current, there was a statement in there about that the district will provide a student assistant program. Student assistant programs aren't provided by our district. Those programs are aligned with the old Safety and Drug Free School Act and Title Four. Right now, we use a comprehensive service for all students, and that would be something that we would do, so we don't have separate student assistant programs that specifically address alcohol and drug-free, or alcohol and drug use. Instead, we tailor to what a student needs based on the comprehensive services we provide. And then, finally, I'm adding the Policy five-six-three-zero-point-zero-one, the Appropriate Use of Secclusion and Restraint. Two years ago, Wisconsin established Act one-two-five, it's a seclusion and restraint statute, and I thought in my conversations with other special education directors and, as well as other districts, they thought it would be beneficial if we have a policy just indicating our compliance with Wisconsin's seclusion and restraint laws. I do want to note, as I look at that, the last sentence of that policy, where it says "The Board of Education establishes the following policy to determine eligibility of students to attend the schools in their district." That is not part of that policy, so that should be striked from your draft. I apologize for that. That's language from a different policy. I'm not sure how that got cut and paste in there. So, it's essentially going through the policy, talking about our goals for school safety, and then our compliance with Wisconsin Act one-two-five, and then our procedures for documenting and reporting incidents of seclusion and restraint.
So, fifty-six-thirty dot oh-one, the last statement?
Yes. Yes, I apologize for that.
Okay, that's okay.
Strike that.
All right. I think I'll just go one by one and ask if there are question and comment. So, for Policy twenty-four-sixty, Exceptional Education, any Board members have question or comment? Fifty-one thirteen, Public School Open Enrollment, questions or comments?
Just a quick question.
Yes.
And this is more if there is an issue. What happens, does the person have to come before the School Board, for instance, like an expulsion, if there is a problem with attendance under the open enrollment, for open enrollment to be revoked?
No, they don't. What we do as a district, obviously, we have just our standard procedures for letting every family know what our attendance policy is, and then when students start to become excessively absent from school, notification from the school via letters, contact usually with the Student Services Staff Member or an Associate Principal. In situations where we have an open enrollment student who is a habitual truant, we have additional conversations with them, there's communication sent from the Student Services Office stating that their open enrollment status is in jeopardy, and then we usually give them an expectation, as it comes down toward the end of the year, in May, a letter of what our expectations are between May and the end of the year in regard to their attendance, and then if they don't meet that, then we just send them a letter stating that their attendance has been revoked, and then they have the right to appeal it at the state level.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't know if the new language modified, what happens if there is a problem? So, thank you for the clarification. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. I do have a question on this, too. We have a truancy policy and an truancy officer, right, in the district?
Our Student Resource Officers Act, and they support us in our roles as truancy officers, so yes.
Okay, so they will administer open enrollment students as well as?
Yes, they do.
As residents?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Fifty-two-hundred attendance, questions or comments? Fifty-three-thirty, administration of medications?
Oh, I didn't cover that one. That was, I apologize, I didn't cover that one with you, and that's where we just put in additional comments about using oral medication.
About what?
Using oral medications in our procedures, because our school nurses also train in administering oral medication.
Okay, thank you. Fifty-five-twelve, smoking and use of tobacco. Fifty-five-thirty, drug prevention. Okay, and the new policy, fifty-six-thirty-oh-one, appropriate use of seclusion and restraint. Any Board questions or comments? Is there any community comment on this report? Okay, seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Kwiatkowski. We move to superintendent's report, beginning with presentation by Mr. Croner, who attended a WASBE, Wisconsin Association of School Board event in the spring, and as per our policy, he will be reporting on that event.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I attended the Spring Academy in Wisconsin Dells on May third, and there were a couple of different tracks. One track that they usually offer covers various aspects of board service, legislative responsibilities, legal responsibilities, school budgeting, all those kinds of things. I have attended that one once before, and I would highly recommend it to any Board member that would like an overview of board service and how it relates to state requirements and our responsibilities within the district. So, that's a track that I think everyone could benefit from. The one I chose to go through was on board governance. That was something I was interested in, and there were several good sessions on that. I made one slide to show, so it's not a full presentation, that I think kind of summarizes what I got out of the meeting. And on the slide that you can see, that's called Effective Governance: A Continuum of Models, it was a summary of six basic models of board governance. So, there's different ways that boards can approach their work, and this was particularly helpful, because there was six basic models that they talked about. If you look at the blue arrows on the right-hand side, those are more general operational designs, where there aren't really specific roles by the Board, and on the left-hand side are more specific operational designs that have more specific definitions of what boards should do. So, I'll just talk about a couple of them. The one on the top right, passive-reactive, that would be a board that basically waits for policies to be presented, is basically reactionary, really isn't forward-looking, and operates more in that way. And then, moving more to the left, is what we are working more under, which is policy governance, which is more policy-based, where everything that the district does is guided by policies, and that the administration is directed to fulfill the policies, and the main function of the Board is to monitor, and monitoring and accountability to see that those policies are carried out. In the middle, there is a Iowa Association of School Boards, IASB Lighthouse Study, and our Board had participated in that study several years ago, and some of our governance model derives from that. And up on the top, Key Work of School Boards, seemed like a particularly good one, that there's a book called The Key Work of School Boards, a guidebook by the National School Boards Association, that's also supported by WASBE, which is the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, that is a quite comprehensive look at board governance. There's maybe twelve different chapters with descriptions of what the responsibilities are for boards within each area, say accountability, for example, questions for boards to ask themselves, how they're functioning in accountability, and then further information about how the boards should interact with the administration and the administration with the Board. So, that's more in the middle. One thing I learned is that in their discussion of policy governance, that's a concept that we frequently cite as one that we follow, but we don't follow it completely. And, for example, we have, you know, the appropriate policies for running the district, but in true policy governance, one of the important set of policy are called N's policies, and those are policies where you have specific policies that describe the outcome that the Board would like for the district. And these are very specific, they're not like we want a high-quality reading program, there would be a set of policies that would say, the Board expects, you know, say proficient plus advanced reading students to increase from forty-eight to fifty-one percent. Okay, so there would be a series of policies on expectations or N's policies, and then at the end of the year, the Board, based on policies that they've written, have specific things to look at for how the district is moving forward. One thing that I...
I'm coming.
Mm-hmm.
I actually tried that two years ago. It didn't work out. So, I favor that model. Maybe we could try again, just to say. Okay.
So, I had previously, going into this, had some stronger favorites about how the Board should work, and, but I unders, I learned that there's not necessarily one right way to do it, but I think that what we're doing now is, we've kind of taken pieces from various models that are up there, which has led to some confusion on the Board and different understandings of what the Board role is in different situations. And so, what I would recommend, based on what I learned at this meeting, is for people to think about looking at the book, The Key Work of School Boards, to see if there's a different way we can approach developing the governance model, so we're all on the same page. The leader of the talk, the person that talked about this was from WASBE, and he suggested something as simple as, you know, taking a chapter, a meeting, and going through it and having discussions, or maybe we could do it at an in-service type level. So, just to summarize, the meeting was very important for me, in that it described some specific models of board governance and different ways that you can approach governing a district, but I thought that the Key Work of School Boards, which sits kind of in the middle of the continuum of the policy governance and the passive-reactive models, would be a really good way to go forward, if that was something we were interested in working with. I suppose the last thing that the speaker said was really important, he said, "It doesn't matter what you call it, don't get hung up on names, but, you know, work through the issues and decide on a governance model, so everyone's working from the same page." And so, it was a very useful meeting for me, and I hope it's something that may prove useful for the Board moving forward.
Thank you. Board members, since we have this opportunity to talk a little bit about it, anybody have any further comments or questions? Mr. Meyer.
What I tried as Board President two years ago was a policy-driven, goal-oriented approach, and it is, well, it failed, not because of any lack of interest. I perceived that as an organization, we didn't know how, that it would take someone to facilitate the, whatever we do, it will take somebody to facilitate and coach, not just the Board, but administration as well, that we all know how to implement what the Board would like to do. That it seems that efforts from top down without collaboration, very explicit, like have meetings, have facilitators, have training for all levels of the organization that will be involved, would be something that would be needed. It's, it was very frustrating that, but I learned that this is not something you can just read and go do from our level, that it takes an organizational implementation plan, you know, an organization-wide implementation plan. Otherwise, the Board is kind of insulated up at the top, doing what it's doing and talking to the superintendent, but the rest of the organization is doing something else. Not out of disrespect or anything, it is just a very formidable task to get everybody on the same cultural page about how the Board is operating. That's all.
Mr. Croner.
Just in response to that, before this meeting, I was...
Um, just in response to that, before this meeting, I was interested in policy governance and some of the things that we were doing as a board and look up, read more about it, and specifically the N's policies. And there are, you know, there were a number of examples of how to write N's policies, and there were districts that used N's policies. And it would take a collaborative effort, because they're, it's, it's different than the way we approach things. For example, we mainly work on, uh, stretch goals now, where we say we want all students, or eighty, eighty-five percent of all students to reach a certain level in reading or math, and it might be twenty or thirty points above where we are now, so it's a, it's a long-term goal that we have, but we don't have a specific goal, like how far do we want to progress each year, or how far should we, should we expect to progress each year? And so the, the N's policies, as I gathered, were, were more specifically geared towards, um, the specific yearly advances that you expected to make. So I, I, I think, um, I don't think it would be impossible to put in place, but you're right, it would take, uh, working together with the administration to decide what are some reasonable year-to-year goals, and how, how would we go about doing that? Um, the advantage of the N's policies is there's no question at the end of the year what it is the board should be looking at, because the policy says, these are the eight outcomes that should have occurred in our district, and they were decided upon between the administration and the board at the beginning of the year. So from that sense, it would simplify things. But, um, I'm not sure if that's the right way to go, because that's a very, you know, that, that would be the full-blown policy governance model. Um, that's why I kind of liked using the book, The Key Work of School Boards, and maybe the WASBE consultant that's expert in that, to see if we started in the middle, how much of each direction we wanted to go to find what's right for our district.
Mrs. Fee.
Thank you. I guess I would just say that I think it's good and valuable for us to look at how we're operating from time to time and whether or not we need to improve that. I will say it's very difficult for me to take a position on anything, because I don't, I'm not familiar with The Key Work of School Boards. I think that this would be a stepping stone for us to, to, you know, perhaps have an in-service on this topic exclusively, and we could find out more about these various things before we go into that meeting, so we can actually have a fruitful discussion. Because I think right now, at least I, I'm speaking only for myself, but I don't have enough knowledge to take a position on how I think the board should operate, other than how we've, what we've tried and hasn't worked. So, uh, I welcome the opportunity to do that, but I don't think I'm qualified or, or capable of doing that right now.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kroner.
I'll just say, I certainly didn't expect anyone to have an opinion about that right now.
Good.
I, I have copies of, of, say, the talk on this slide that was a full forty-five-minute talk, and that only touched a little bit on each of the models. So if this is something we were going to move forward with, we could certainly, I could certainly give people that information, plus we could get additional information on the models, different models we want to pursue. So this really was just an introduction to the, to the topic, and wasn't really expected to be a decision-making event.
Mrs. Mufton.
Well, I would just appreciate if you could share the information, have forwarded to this, you know, Connie, Ms. Galante, and we can all see what, what you have been through. That's always, I think it's always good to share knowledge.
I will see if I can-
Whether it leads anywhere or not, I think it's good to share knowledge and, and, you know, I mean, in that way, I'll have a better understanding, you know, of what, of what you, what you've been through.
Several of the speakers said they would be willing to share their PowerPoint files, so I'll see if I can get them as an easier way to share the information.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Mrs. Casey.
Um, I'd be open to, to looking at something like this too as, as a, a board, especially as a new board member with, um, new perspective and kind of like, how is this board going to look for the next three years? Um, I'm interested to learn more about the N's policy, because I think sometimes it's, that can be a framework or provide guidance for boards, because I think sometimes it's very easy for boards to want to micromanage. And, um, I think that's something that we need to be careful of, it's easy to do. And then, um, something that Mr. Meyer said, uh, everybody getting on the same cultural page, and I think especially, you know, after Act Ten, you know, I just wrote an article in M Magazine, which, well, it was the school district, Dr. Erdel and Principal Hughes were quoted in and, and participated in this article, and, and there really is a sense of, um, some insecurity amongst, you know, public employees, and I think it's, we're, we're at kind of a, a critical point here. We've got, um, new board, and, and we are implementing a new teacher evaluation system, and we're all here, you know, for kids, and we know that, you know, the way to make student learning happen is to put great teachers in front of kids, and I think we need to really look at, as a culture, and, and really have good communication between the teachers, the administration, and the board, and, and make it safe for everybody. So, thank you.
Mr. Meyer.
I, I had looked at this two years ago as a question of what can the board do? And the endeavor quickly proved itself to be detached from the rest of the organization. And, um, you know, the things that you would think are shared knowledge, like what is a goal, how do you write a goal, what does it mean, what do you do with a goal when you have a goal? Not everybody has the same idea about what those things are and what they mean. And unless everybody is thinking about it in the same way, and there are many different ways to, to create goals and to work towards goals, you'd think there'd be only one way, but actually there's a lot of different ways to look at things. So, in a sense, now I start to think that instead of the board deciding what the board wants to do, the board and the superintendent should examine what the school district is doing, and, and how can the board participate using one of these models to facilitate the, what the, what, what the organization is doing? Because there's seven board members and, what, roughly like seven thousand students and a thousand teachers?
Correct.
So there's eight thousand, eight thousand people plus seven board members. Well, those eight thousand people are going in a direction, and we need to, as a board, understand that direction and know when we pick one of these solutions for how we behave, how we can work with those eight thousand. And that's, to me, how we, as a board, um, cha- you know, enhance the, the progress and, and maybe, um, point, point the direction. Um, but to say the seven are going to decide something, and the eight thousand are going to follow, as a practical reality, it doesn't work out very easily. Um, so just a perspective on that, we're actually a very small part of this operation, a very, you know, we're in charge, um, but just a, a reflection on that, you know, how, instead of saying, "What can the board do?", well, ask, "What is the organization doing, and how can the board work with that?". Um, because they're, they're bigger than us, they're eight thousand, and we're seven. So anyway, just some reflections on how to go about this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, um, what I would like to say is, we, um, in the time I've been on the board, have engaged in quite a few efforts. As Mr. Meyer said, he took the lead, uh, when he was president. Mrs. Mufton has consistently, um, made efforts and, um, brought opportunities to the board for, for board development. And so we, I, it, it is a work in progress, and, and we're aware of it, and we do work on it. Um, I wouldn't characterize our board right now as being confused. You know, I, I guess I should just let Mr. Meyer's words speak for themselves. But, um, I think it's important for people to know that this is not something we're just suddenly awakening to, that there are different ways of governing, and that we need to be careful and we need to be inclusive. Um, and again, we've, even The Key Work of School Boards, I know was quoted frequently when we were engaged in the Lighthouse Study. And also, I find that really helpful online, because we have a membership, each of us, to the National School Boards Association, we can access, and often when I'm looking up a topic, um, I'll get a reference from The Key Work of School Boards, a summary or an article or something. Um, so, you know, I appreciate everyone's comments. We will be doing some board development, um, we will be working as well on our, um, current bylaws. And as far as the N's go, N's policies go, I think, the way I understand, N's policies are synonymous to what we refer to as our goals, and whether they're stretch or, or short-term goals. They define where we want to go. Now, excuse me, I think the discussion that, um, Mr. Kroner is interested in having is, do we want them to be stretch goals, or do we want them to be short-term? I think it's kind of hard, and this goes to Mr. Meyer's points once again, to say by the end of the year, you know, our, our stretch goal is ninety-five percent. By the end of this school year, it'll be at seventy-two. Um, and am I not interpreting that correctly? I'm not sure. So anyway, that's, I think it's going to be all part of the discussion. And, yeah, I would appreciate too if you send what you have, and we're currently talking about and working on, um, a facilitator who might be able to come in and keep us moving on this. Yes?
Just one last comment on goals. Um, the person that was presenting this was a former superintendent, now working for WASBE, and he, he expressed a strong preference for the N's policies, because they were specific. And obviously, districts have stretch goals, we want all of our students to, you know, to reach as high a level as possible, as many of them as high as possible, so that's always going to be long, our long-term goal. But he felt that, for him, if the board said, "We want the proficient plus advanced reading to increase by two points next year", that he liked that, because he knew exactly what he was charged to do, and he could go to his administrators and say, "We need to increase our reading efficiency by this much". And so it was a very specific charge that everyone could latch on to and understand and work toward. So, it, it's not like an either-or, you're always going to have both sets of goals, but-
Right.
-defining them both more specifically made it easier for the board to know what they were supposed to look at when they were doing their accountability work. And it was more clear for the administration exactly what they were supposed to accomplish.
Okay. Dr. Erdel, do you feel prepared to speak at all on this? I know you've been engaged in all of our, our development.
Yeah, we've had, we had someone come in and talk about policy governance, it said, it might have been seven or eight years ago.
Uh-huh.
That didn't go so well. The, um, but I think it's important to remember about goals. What you're talking about is at what level of the organization do we set yearly goals? Currently, we set yearly goals based on the, um, the district goals. Each building has a yearly goal, and now this year, it's going to be very clear that the administrator's goals and the teacher's goals are directly aligned through the new evaluation system, so I see that alignment, but I, you know, there's, there's different ways to look at it, that's what you're, you're all talking about, so.
And how do you, how do you think what we do now with our, um, district development plan fits into all of this?
Well, I think it's our, I mean, I guess it's more than just our, our district goals on there, but we kind of lay out everything we're doing on the year. And if, if you want to look at short-term yearly goals, those are short-term yearly goals, we call them initiatives and projects. But that whole sheet, or two sheets, is really, here's what we're saying we're going to do for a year, that's really what you want from a goal. The goal is, here's what we want to achieve, and then at the end of the year, when we do the report, how did we do on it? I mean, our whole organization is goal-oriented and goal-driven, um, probably some would believe too-goal and, and, uh, results-driven, but that's really what we want. We want our students to achieve, and that's what we, we target, so.
Okay.
But I think the discussion comes at where are those, what level is the board at?
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Meyer.
To go in any direction like this, and of course, all of us have tried, and, um, this is one more statement of the value of trying again, um, perhaps we, as a board, could receive some in-service-style education from administration on how goals are set within the organization, and how people work towards achieving those goals, and how people are assessed, um, at the end of the assessment period, as to whether they achieved their goal, if they did, if they didn't, what does that mean? We need to understand how the eight thousand are operating before we decide how the seven should try to affect change on the eight thousand. So that's, that'd be my suggestion. And I, I come to that suggestion from, um, my conclusion that as board president, I tried and I failed, and there were some things I didn't understand about organizations, and that was the, I think, this presentation tonight helps me, you know, understand in my mind what went wrong in my approach. Because the eight thousand didn't fail, you know, the board president failed, you know, so I, I, and therefore I would say we need to have a, you know, another approach. Now, the school district didn't fail during that period of time. But as far as a, a harsh assessment of myself, you know, how did we do, could we have done better? I'd say, "Well, sure, we could do better as a board". So I'll, I'll lea- I'll leave it at that. That would be my suggestion, that we learn how things are done right now before we make a decision on how we want to see things done in the future.
Mr. Kroner.
What I'm kind, what I'm advocating is not that we say, "We're going to decide next week to start a new project to, to change our governance structure". What I would advocate is using something like The Key Work of School Boards, is simply using that as a tool to examine various aspects of governance, to see how that fits with what we're doing, and decide as, we would go through something like that, that it has ideas that we'd want to implement or not. So I'm not necessarily advocating that we go into a project saying, "We're going to change our governance structure", but if we were, if we choose to go forward with this, just go in a learning mode, saying, "We're going to use a particular tool to learn more about governance, and if something strikes the majority of board members and the administration of something that we want to explore in more detail, we could do that". So I think, taking that attitude is a little different, because we're just going in a learning mode, and we don't have to feel like we have to, you know, develop something new automatically, because almost everything that we do, we're doing right, but there might be some things in this, in the approach of learning more about governance, that might tweak a few things just to make us more efficient in what we already do. So I think just going into it with a more learning mode, rather than we have to make a change mode, would be easier way to get through it, and, and easier way to have success, I think.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Um, I have notes of, uh, people's suggestions and ideas, and as I said, we have been getting ready to embark on another board development initiative. I, I really like Mr. Meyer's thought, because it's not, it's something we haven't done before. Um, we have before taken specific models and, and tried to model ourselves after those, and, but all of this can be part of the discussion. What this will help me do is find the, the best facilitator for that process. And Mr. Meyer, I, you didn't fail, um, and I think evidence of that is that we are here continuing to try to improve, just like we ask our teachers and our kids to do. So we are involved in continuous improvement efforts, and that would have been the goal.
Well, I certainly learned during the process.
Yeah.
So, in that sense, it's never a failure, we're an educational institution, and we're, um, learning how to work with our organization, so, thank you.
Okay. Is there any community comment on this discussion? Okay, thank you, and thank you for the report, Mr. Kroner, and we'll look forward to the follow-up information that you're going to be sending. And, uh, Dr. Erdel will speak about opening day schedule for this year.
Sure. Summer is over, fall sports are underway, kids are ready to go back to school, parents are probably more ready to have the kids back to school, which, today is a perfect time to reflect upon the concept of your own school. Not that, my shameless plug, plug for that, but it is going to be part of the district development plan to explore your own school. These are the times of the year where I look and say, "Why don't we have your own school? The break is long enough, let's get the kids back to school, there's a lot of activities that are taking place". It's really not a whole lot about the opening day, but it is a reflection about opening day, because it, it still is an exciting time of the year, it's a renewal, it's an opportunity to, to change and to get excited for students to take that next step in the grade level, and for teachers and staff to come back and try something new and, and reinvent and, and get better, so. So we are having a speaker that's going to be with us, Jamie Vollmer. He's got a story. He used to be kind of anti-public education, and he's found the light. And he is a very good speaker and motivational-type speaker. But he's going to be with us talking about, he's a basically champion in education. If you do a Google search on Jamie Vollmer, there's a story about blueberries that he talks about, which is a really good story. But we're going to be doing distinguished service awards. So I think there is twelve staff members that will be recognized at that meeting, which is something new, which is kind of a neat way to bring staff aboard. And also, we have a number of parents that are going to be there, talking to the staff about their experiences in the school district and breakfast as well. So that is the twenty-eighth of August on Thursday. That will be actually the third day that all staff report. Actually, next Monday, all our new staff start their in-service as well. So the new school year is upon us.
Yes, it is. Thank you. Questions for Dr. Erdl? Any community comment on the opening day report? Okay. Is there any community comment? Once again, an opportunity for community comment on non-agenda items. Okay, seeing none. I would ask for a motion to adjourn and reconvene in Conference Room A to conduct a board in-service regarding the duties and responsibilities of elected officials. As this in-service is a working session of the board, no public comment will be entertained at this meeting. However, following the in-service, the board may take action concerning issues discussed in the in-service. This in-service will begin at eight PM or thereafter. May I have a motion?
I move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Mrs. Galante, please.
Mr. Baden.
Yes.
Mrs. Casey.
Yes.
Mrs. Fee.
Yes.
Mr. Kroner.
Yes.
Mrs. Mufeld.
Yes.
Mrs. Randall.
Yes.
Thank you.